Can we hear them?
Mike, can you unread yourself?
So without objection, let's go that route. Without objection, the agenda is approved. We have a couple of member comments. So, Shelly, do you have the order? You want member comments?
Am I allowed to do this?
Yes, please come talk to us.
Okay. I want to give you all my compliments. I have spent forty years in Ruston. And for the first time, I'm so excited over the fact that we're able to communicate with each other, individually and as a group. And I was talking to Cameron the other day when I was doing a little research on the Barrett-Cameron project, given our issues with that particular issue with Fairfax County. And I didn't find anything, Larry, relax.
I didn't think you would.
No, because you got to squirrel away. In any event, in any event, I'm excited about the fact that we finally can get the ability for all members.
Hello?
Hi, Mike.
You're on. You can hear me. Mike, we're here.
Oh, hey, great, thanks. Thanks for getting me in last minute.
Hi, Mike. Bill Roundtree.
Okay, cool.
There you go.
Please continue.
So, when I was talking to Cameron, and I gave him a big accolade because we not had the ability to communicate among associations or members communicating. Whether it's we're in compliance with P O or not, which remains to be seen. And I'm so excited that you are able to create this membership directory of all of the associations. So in one click, I can pick up the phone, which I haven't been able to do for forty years, and talk to my guys up in whatever tennis court, whatever issue, and say, hey, what do you think? What's happening? What do you want me to do? How can I help? Blah, blah, blah. Now, I want you to go one step further. I need a membership directory for the entire organization. And P O requires it. And I need the ability to communicate, whether it's a referendum, or whether it's a recall, or just the ability to talk to people. Now, when I talked to Tony, I don't do Twitter. I don't do Facebook. That's insufficient. That's communication between the association and anybody who chooses to use that medium. That does not satisfy the P O requirements of members having the ability to communicate with members. Okay, let's segue to Barton Hill. I have no objection to your negotiation of a fee deal with Fairfax County for pursuing a planning commission and board of supervisors' approach with the Board of Zoning Appeals. Okay? And I understand you were having these conversations. And that's fine, you should do that. And I don't object to your negotiating your fee schedule. Okay? Obviously, we have a difference of opinion on whether or not that should be the process. I'm in favor of planning commission, and I'm in favor of the ability for us to articulate our views to the board of supervisors. Okay, we've all made our cases to the BZA. We're all going there on September 28th. And we'll hear whether or not it's a decision-making meeting or whether or not there's an opportunity for comment. That's fine. My kudos to you if you have the capability to negotiate your fees downward, Larry. Okay? Because when I looked at the fee schedule, I thought it was ludicrous. And all we're doing is supporting a bureaucracy. Maybe it doesn't need to be supported.
Lloyd, we're here.
Okay, thanks. That's all right, thanks. Hi, Larry.
Now, I do not know the purpose of your executive session that you wish to discuss. And that's fine. I would like to get some feedback as to what you all are pursuing and where you're going and how you want to do it. And then what input we can give you as a member of the community. Because I'm a spokesman for Barton Hill Road, and your member secretary needs to remember this. Because I didn't get any notice of this meeting. Period. Period. The only one I got was from some of my troops who spend their time going through the Ruston Association website. And I said, oh my gosh, we got a special meeting on Barton Hill Road. Well, you know, you know, you know, and everybody else knows that Bill Roundtree speaks for Barton Hill Road. Now, you have a fiduciary responsibility to communicate with your associations and your condo units. But when you have an issue like this, you create paranoia and fear when there's no notice. And we don't know what the purpose of the meeting is. Now, you're entitled to have your private discussions and to pursue your strategies, just as I am. All right? If we ever sit down and have a real-life discussion, you might find that there's some similarities of a potential approach to solve your problem, and my problem. But nobody has ever come to me from the Ruston Association to suggest that approach. And I'm suggesting to you, as I've suggested to several individual board members, that, gentlemen, this is not how we should do business in Ruston. The R A has done a superb job over the years. All right, it has its glitches. It has its bureaucracy. It has its inability to handle member confrontation. And they close in insular on themselves. And that's wrong. What we need to do is open up the lines of communication and have the ability to sit down at a table and either negotiate, or, gee, I'm so sorry, I cannot accept the compromise, and we get up and walk away and go fight our battles. As an attorney, that's how it's portrayed. You were trained that way. You were trained that way. And NGOs need to really focus on what my principle has been all these years, is you solve your problems at the lowest level possible with communication. And with great humility to listen to the other person's counsel and advice. Okay? So I wish you Godspeed because, quite frankly, I am so excited over this board because I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. All right? I hope your new CEO can grasp his leadership range with Larry's help and the board. And bring us all together because I came to Ruston a long time ago. I'd like to stay.
Thank you, thank you. Just to give you some clarity in what's happening today is we have consult with council. That's why we're going to executive session. But the motion will be made when we come out. And I can have staff email you what the motion was and what the results are. So, absolutely. Any other?
I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Roundtree, if you wish to receive notice of meetings, you simply apply to the assistant secretary, and you will be notified by email of all of the meetings.
Yes, all right. We have a team, a working group. Just to educate you all, we have a pickleball expert, we have a light expert, we have a legal expert, we have an institutional Ruston Association expert. And we have people, six hundred people in Barton Hill. And the retail value of the homes is about fifty-five million. So we have people that track.
Hi, Margaret.
Hi, Margaret.
Oh, good, just making sure it wasn't me. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, we're not quite ready to have everyone here to start the meeting yet, but I hope soon.
Okay.
We have people that track the Ruston Association calendar. And unfortunately, we didn't get the notice on this one. And that's okay. It's fine. And, but our team has done a superb job. And we have some, at the proper time and the proper form, whether it's R A or whether it's the planning commission or the board of supervisors, who are prepared to give you a lot of information that you don't have and you need desperately in order to make a proper decision on this project.
Well, thank you.
But yes, you're right. And that's why I gave her my card. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
John, you happy?
Thank you so much.
All right, see you.
If we can have a motion to move into executive session.
Madam President, I move to call to executive sessions for the purpose of consulting and counseling regarding litigation.
Second.
Without objection, move into executive session. Thank you, Larry, take us away. Do you have a place you want them to wait at? Or? Do you have a place you want them to wait at, or?